...show, a super nice young man. And last, when he came before, he flew the two-seater, the tandem Blue Angels to take people up around for rides and stuff like that. He got promoted up to one of the active members of the show team. And so, as you pray, let's remember him and his family, also all our military, our police, our fire, and our first responders. Heavenly Father, thank you. This time we can come out and make decisions on behalf of this great city of Northport, Alabama, just give wisdom and guidance to these council people to make the best decisions that one that you would have them to make. Lord, just thank you for our citizens, just thank you for their support, thank you for them being at the meeting tonight. Lord, just thank you for blessing us, thank you for taking care of our city, thank you for our police, our fire, our first responders, all of our military. Thank you for letting us live in a nation where we can assemble ourselves together and conduct business without fear of any outside government. We're just thankful to live in the United States of America. Just thank you for blessing us, thank you for loving us, these things we ask of you.
Amen. Attention, salute, praise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Swan, Colorado, please.
Mr. Logan.
Here.
Councilwoman Hayes, with us, and Mr. President, Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Councilman Sam.
Here.
Councilman Harper is also with us.
Thank you. I want to give everybody an update on Councilwoman Hayes, of course, she's still recuperating, so please keep her in your thoughts and prayers. She's been out for a couple of council meetings, and we wish her all the best in her recuperative phase. Item five is approved of the agenda. At this time during the pre-meeting, we're presented with our agenda from the city administrative office. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Sims. Any questions or comments? Here you are, Mr. Swan.
Mr. Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sam.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Taylor.
Thank you. Item six is visitors to address the council, Ms. Jenny Brown. Ms. Brown, thank you, come on up. Thank you for coming. Yes, ma'am. Pull the mic down a little bit.
It's kind of short.
No, I'm not trying to say you're short, but if that's too tall, I'll put that in. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jenny Brown. I am at 5808 Summit Drive, Brookport, Alabama. My work address is 408 Main Avenue, Brookport, Alabama, 35476. And thank you guys for allowing me to come up here and speak today. First of all, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that what I read in the media regarding the recent truck at the track event. First of all, it said that we were all in full support of this event, and when reality is, is that the majority of us down there didn't have a clue that this was going to go off. City Cafe, Eye Catchers, The Five and Dime, Lily Pad, Andrew's Hardware, the Lynn's Barbershop, Sue's Flower Shop, Billy's Restaurant, none of us were contacted, or Mr. Barnes, or former domain manager, keeping from leaving them out, were not included in any discussion prior to this event and plan. We had no way to provide any input, we weren't allowed to ask questions, we weren't allowed to make any changes or say anything that would make this be a better event to make Northport, you know, thrive from that. And of course, anytime there's an event planned for downtown Northport, we want it to be a great event, but, you know, we were not allowed, we were not notified, and therefore we didn't have any input whatsoever. We all had to find out secondarily from Facebook, from hearing on the radio. Unfortunately, you know, if someone had asked, I could have told you. I pay almost $890 a year for parking, because our lots down there are private. Yes, the parking on the streets, it's free, I mean, that's public property, however, those lots are owned by individuals, and that's based on how many cars you turn over. Not everyone in downtown Northport pays fees, you know, there's some that pay none, however, we paid the majority of those parking fees. We weren't asked. I was refunded for my parking that was taken from me that day, and that's due, and I'm going to wait on that refund, I guess, but, you know, no one asked me if that was okay to do that, and it was taken for a private business, and I just don't think that's ethical to do that, to take from me that I've already paid for, to give it to another business or person. Normally, if anyone comes to downtown Northport during lunchtime, you're going to see, Monday Friday, we don't have a majority of parts that are empty, our parts are full, you know, we did not ask for any walking traffic to be provided to us, you know, we are thriving in downtown. The businesses I've mentioned, all of them, have been pouring their hearts and soul into creating their business, building a customer base up, and yet our own customers could not get to us that day. They could not get parts. Lily Pad reported that they had five customers complain that they couldn't find a park at lunch and had to come back later in the day. Our business, our customers couldn't find parts, yes. I had increased use of our bathrooms, you know, we had a line for the bathrooms, we had disposed of customers' trash that was not from our own restaurant. And again, this entire event has been planned at a different time that would not have affected any of us, you know, we could have been, you know, celebrating in it ourselves, however, this was planned at the biggest time of my workday. And I just feel like it was a letdown to us, after we've been paying taxes there for the past four years, that we were not informed in any way whatsoever. And I hope that that is taken into consideration whenever there's another event that's planned for downtown, that each and every business that's going to be affected directly financially or any way that they're included in a conversation, a discussion, you know, some kind of committee, you know, for someone should have notified each individual that owns that historic Main Avenue. Billy's Restaurant, they were not notified. His restaurant and my restaurant are the only two restaurants in downtown Northport. You're selling food down the street for me and taking my parts. I have a, I don't understand how that is promoting an event that's making me be happy with it. Also, an event we could have supported and been very happy with if it was done for a charity. This was planned for private business, for someone to make money. It wasn't planned to promote, you know, in the advertising, they didn't say, shop at all these businesses and give a list of all the businesses in downtown. This event was planned for a specific individual to make money, and that wasn't something that we were provided, because we weren't provided any free advertising as far as inclusion to make it an event for all of downtown. And let's see, also, Eye Catchers, they reported a 50% loss that day for their business. We had empty tables at lunchtime, and, you know, I have heard comments about, well, you know, we should be happy because our line was, you know, to here or to there. You know, no one knows how much I have to spend every single day for taxes, taxes that pay for the policemen, taxes that pay for the bread lines, taxes that pay for that pavement out front, for the bricks, for the, all the laborers that go in to run in the town. That's what the restaurants, the brick, the moral, and all the other businesses downtown Northport, that's what we pay every single day. When you allow someone to come in that doesn't contribute to that, they're just getting a free ride, and I just don't think that's what we need to do to make Northport be a stronger business. You know, we have a revitalization plan that means the taxpayer dollars are spent on, we expect that hotel to go down there, I'm not giving up on it, they were expected to abide by historical codes, you know, if they can't get there yet, I don't see how a truck is going to fit into that code. I expect the council to ensure that this plan that we've already put some money on is turned out. Now, I don't expect for it to just be, you know, brushed under the rug, because we've been there for the long haul, and we plan on being there, and that's going to bring the greatest economic impact to the entire town is when we develop that riverfront based on that plan that means the dollars are spent on, and I don't want to lose focus of that. I think food trucks have their place, see the events, they can be planned with a lot better planning. I want the city to grow, but it's something that has to be done, including all of us, and not just doing it for special people, you know, so I hope that we can all learn from this event and go away with something positive, and, you know, and I guess that's pretty much all for that for me.
Thank you.
Because we want it to be a great place to continue to work.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you, Jane. Second citizen visitor to address the council, Mr. Robert Thomas.
To Mayor, Council President Logan, Mayor Charles, City Administrator Swan, other council members, staff, my name is Robert Thomas, I reside at 34609 Old Olive Drive, 35475. And thank you, Charles, for putting me on the agenda for today to talk to an issue that has been ongoing, well, really, really on and off for the past maybe fifteen years, and that's the widening of ML King during the Boulevard. As you know, when I was on the council, back when it first came to the table about widening ML King, we had received a grant of some ten million dollars, and at that time, the council approved that particular project, the widening of ML King, and we had begun to set aside the city's 20% match. Now, I know that in 2004, there was a successor in District Two, so the project was to take place, and the project was kind of used for political football and was kicked down the road. Then it was off for maybe about eight years, then it was back on, and then again, I think as recently as 2012, I think that the state contacted the city about the need to proceed or to return some funds, maybe, and I think that City Administrator Collins, at the time, he advised the council that he thought it was worth following, that he needed to consider moving ahead with it, and I think that the council, even waiting to nail it at the time, also supported moving forward with it. And I think that it had begun a process, and I think that the acquisition of right wing and all that was part of the plan, and there was outline of how, when those things were to take place, as well as a completion date for the completion of the project itself, which I think was 2016, maybe 2017. And then, I think, several months ago, maybe, state contacted the city again about either going ahead with the project, what you were going to do, or they were asking that you return some money back to the state that they had given to the city for some of the preliminary work on that particular project. So my question today is, is the project on, or is it off? And if so, when is there a realistic date for again and completing the project?
Good question, Robert. Thank you for coming. I think your dates are correct. Back in 2012, council looked at that project to make sure that you either go forward with it or you stand risk of losing the federal dollar. The city at the time was very favorable, of course, I think the city council is still favorable now, I can't speak for the other two gentlemen, but we are now to a point where the federal dollars are about to be extinguished, but thankful, thankful for Congresswoman Terri Sewell in her office, she made sure that those federal dollars are still in play. So that was the risk that we had back in December of 2015, this is most recent, that the city ran risk of losing those $7.8 million in federal money to offset the cost that we would have to do with the project. Luckily, Congresswoman Sewell's office saw the value and the need of that project in that area, so she made sure that the Federal Highway Department still had those funds in play. Now that, now that we know those funds are in play, the city council needs to basically make a resolution in support of it, and that we access ALDOT through our design engineering firm, I think Bruce Higginbotham is here with BKI, if we had any questions, but Bruce's office and ALDOT, we are now going to put a plan of construction together once the resolution is being put forth from council. So, right now, we're to the point where I think council is receptive of the project, you may see something on the next agenda, which is June 27th, I think next council will be, it'll give you some time to make sure council digested all information from fifteen, twenty years ago to get to this point, so actually twenty years, if you remember.
Right.
I was sitting in high school when we first done the project, that's interesting.
Well, the thing is, is not to create any dissension, but basically, you know, this is something that is far past due, because I recall too, there was a $14 million bond issue that was done, and that's where the matching left for this particular project was coming from. And like I said, you know, it has continually been kicked down the road or put on the shelf somewhere in the rear, and none of this happened. So, again, basically, my concern was just to know whether it was going to finally come to fruition, or whether, you know, it was going to just can it, and then we all know what's going on with this particular issue.
Yeah.
Let me ask Bruce, I know Jenny mentioned your name there, not trying to put you on the spot, but as far as engineering wise, what percent have we got as far as the project as it was last presented? How far along is sort of engineering design going on that?
The project was in the environmental historic study phase, Mayor Herndon, so it's still at that point, so it's moved forward, I say that at that point, and then some preliminary design.
Okay, so some preliminary design has been done?
Yes.
We're at the environmental stage right now, and so if the council was to, in the very, very near future, you have to go ahead and say, this council is ready to do something, best expectation, best guess as far as with your firm and with ALDOT, when we move through maybe construction plans, we see that being going to bid, are we talking to two years down the road, as far as best case scenario?
I would say so. You're looking at, once you got to go ahead, probably first of the year when ALDOT would start that, and you're looking at about a two-year window of doing that, so probably construction at some point in nineteen is to.
I see that thing. Okay, well, I know Robert has been up here several times, and I appreciate that. I'm going to challenge the council to make a decision in the next meeting or so as to whether this is a project that is in the best interest of the city. We know the background of it, we know the history, we know the timeframe as far as the best case scenario, so I challenge this council to make a decision, hopefully by the next meeting, but if not, by the meeting after that, so this project can, once and all the questions be answered.
Hey Bobby, so no longer an issue about the residents voting for, wasn't that a problem or what?
We did have some residents in the neighborhood, correct me, I'm wrong, Jay.
Actually.
That were opposed to this project.
And it required voting?
No, sir, what we did, there was an issue with residents years ago, because it wouldn't ever see based on the current design, but Bruce and I have been working very hard, one-on-one, working with the residents when we had the first couple meetings, and the project that you have in your mind and develop, the story behind it is no more because of some of the issues back ten, fifteen years ago. Fast forward to 2012, there was an opportunity to redesign the project and simply make it a way where you can have a beautification project and still address the transportation issue on the project, and not making everybody mad like pointing at it. So I think we've accomplished that with the new design, we had a couple meetings to that. So as far as the residents being opposed to it, I think you've had three residents who may be displaced, and of those three, I've got letters basically saying, please come take my property.
Okay, great. So then, with the monies for the bond issue, I know with the last council meeting, there was a line of credit, I think the council approved, so it's not a matter of whether we will have, where we can find the 20% match for that money to go ahead, but in other words, it won't be a money issue when it comes time to move forward with the project.
I wouldn't say so, now, I could be wrong, but back in '09, I think it was part of a 2009 bond issue, or not the second, but I need to verify, but I think that's correct.
Now, let me ask Bruce one more question. Have we had all the public hearings that we would have to have on this project before it started?
We have, because of the time lapse, we're going to have to have another, we've had more than the adequate number to meet federal guidelines.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to have any more public hearings as far as with residents, or is that something that we would have to do?
I would, I would think we would have one, we would have another one, we should have to inform the public yet.
Very good, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert. This is Julia Sosa.
Mayor Herndon and city council and staff, thank you for inviting me, I'm going to thank Wendy for inviting me to come represent the vendors that were at the truck by the track, and I understand what Ms. Brown from City Cafe said in regards to if they were not included, I apologize, I wasn't part of the planning, I was part of the event, but I think that it's not going to happen on a daily basis, this may be once a month or once a quarter, and it was interesting to see the response from the people that came over, that they liked the different seating, the different choices, and to some of her comments, we have to pay taxes and we have to pay for license, and so it's not like it's all profit, because the city of Northport and the county of Tuscaloosa, all there is money on the profits that the vendors do. I have to say that we had a great response, I'm sorry about the parking issue, I wasn't aware that they still park in the side of the restaurants, but they park actually around the track, and so on behalf of the vendors, and I represent my husband's business, I represent the vendors, the Latino vendors, Mexican restaurants in Northport and the city of Tuscaloosa, I would hope that events like this continue, but yes, I agree with Ms. Brown's comments that maybe the local vendors need to be included in the planning because it's a win-win situation for everybody that was present. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to give our voice.
Thank you, Ms. Sosa. Mr. Paul Humphrey, Billy's Restaurant.
Good evening, Mayor Herndon and city council, hope that I haven't given you that tonight. I'm Leanne Callaway with Billy's Sports Brothers, this is Paul Humphrey. Our business address is 430 Main Avenue, Northport, 35476. We are here tonight to propose an event for downtown Northport. We're looking to do an event that is inclusive of all the businesses in downtown Northport. Have an idea of Streets in the Streets. Our vision is to have something where we're bringing music downtown, kind of, kind of like we do with our Tipton Tuscaloosa event, which is a monthly event that benefits the charity. This is, this particular event, we'd like to benefit the Northport Fine Arts Initiative, but the whole idea is to bring people across the river from around Northport to come down to downtown Northport, see what we're like, experience it, so that they continue to come back.
Very good.
We're, our proposed date is August 27th, that is, after school is in, before rush, before football season, so that's kind of where that date came from, still kind of on the tail end of the summer field, so the people are still wanting to be outside and enjoy walking around and experiencing the beautiful area downtown.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Saturday.
I want to say, what hour of the week?
I would choose for late, late afternoon, you know, kind of going into the evening time, but we want to make sure that it's the time that's going to benefit all the businesses down here, because a lot, you know, a lot of businesses don't stay open later, we do, but it needs to be something that's going to fit within that realm to be inclusive of everyone. So if it was kind of an afternoon into the evening, our thought is to, if we could close the streets where we're looking at Fifth and Main, but not to close off entirely Fifth that way, that you're still having traffic coming through, people can still access parking, but down towards the railroad tracks would be an area that we could use for walking.
Would you be able to get a beer to explode in there that long?
Absolutely. And we'd also need you to look at relaxing the alcohol regulations and ordinances so that we could make sure you had a beer to go on with that.
Hey, Paul, and Ma'am, let me ask you this, as far as the plan action, Ron, did you hear that, August 27th, and I don't know what our alcohol license referring to restaurants, can you look at that and maybe report to city administrator's office to see what we need to do to facilitate that?
Yes, sir.
And that's August 27th? You want to say five, I guess, 5:00 PM?
Ten to the play, I think that's a good.
And I think the next thing, Chief Burton, can we, I guess, get with the property owner or the business owner, and maybe look at the traffic shut down the street, maybe do the proper permitting, is that something we need to?
Yes, sir.
All right. I guess that will be Chief Marshall too as well, get him involved as well, just to make sure, because it may be where the South, Fifth and Main may be feasible, or maybe where you need to block all of the, they just need to look at, so.
Okay.
I think it's a great, great, great idea, and this is going to benefit the Northport Fine Arts Initiative, we're trying to beat it back up, so.
That's right.
So you make business number two, that's come unsolicited to the city council wanting to help this initiative, so I'll thank you on that one.
Well, we, I'm sure you're familiar with our monthly event, Tipton Tuscaloosa.
Yes.
And that's all based around singer-songwriters, people that are actually making their own music, playing their own instruments, and it's been a great event, it benefits a different charity each month, and this is just another way to kind of make sure that our students and children are able to grow up with that kind of background, because that's important, and that seems to be a lot of what's taken out of schools.
Absolutely, you'll probably see, hopefully, if this initiative goes well, we're going to try to revamp it and roll it back out, and maybe get some support from local businesses to support all the elementary schools inside the city, so I think with you guys coming on board, that'll definitely add more value to the initiative. Exactly, so Ron, I guess our plan of action is, if you'll let us know about the relaxing of the ordinance, maybe if we need to vote on it via council, maybe next council meeting have something, maybe, on the 27th of June. Chief, I guess if we need to contact the property owners and maybe, and with John Powell's office to maybe go through a shutdown of the street if possible during that day, and then Chief Marshall, I guess we need to kind of make sure your guys are okay with fire.
Now, how would, how would the, would you be charging admission, or what would you be doing as far as?
Typically, how we work for our current events, we do, we ask for donations.
Okay, that's true.
I mean, minimal, we always have a suggested amount, but it's whatever you can give, and people do, they do give, and it does really raise money for the charity.
All right, that's awesome, that's a great idea. Streets in the Streets, I like that. All right, Paul, if you'll give us a week or so, I'll make sure that I contact you, and Chief Burton, Chief Marshall, and Ron Davis will definitely be contacting your office to give you an update on it, and if we can get the ordinance relaxed by the 27th, that'll pretty much be one of the things you got to worry about. So I really like it, I don't know about council, but I think it's a great idea to serve a lot of kids, so with this initiative. Thank you, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming here tonight.
Yes, thank you. Dustin Spruill, I'd actually ask to speak, I don't know if he was in the audience tonight, but Dustin.
How are you doing?
Good.
Dustin Spruill, let me give my address, 1630 Wood Ridge Road, Tuscaloosa, 35406. First of all, thank you for allowing me to come up here to speak, mayor and council. I wanted to touch base on a lot of issues, I've been kind of on the front of this whole food truck movement in Tuscaloosa for the last six, eight months a year, and it's been a long battle, we're fighting a good fight. I wanted to first start with just a little bit of background, some people are a little confused on what a food truck is, where it comes about, where we fit in. First of all, this is a movement nationwide, last year was a $1 billion industry, this is not a fad, this is a trend that is here to stay, and what has happened over the years, 25 years ago or so, people would associate food trucks with more of a carnival-style trailer, funnel cakes, frozen, fried foods, things like that, nothing wrong with that concept, but they would follow around different carnivals or events, and that was kind of it, and then eventually, there was a lot of talented people that are going to culinary school, and as you know, restaurants are one of the most failing businesses in the United States. It takes a lot of investment, banks won't lend a lot of money for people to start a restaurant, and they're And there are tremendously talented people out there that are kinda burnt out from doing the same thing every day, being in the same restaurant every day. And slowly, these people started getting their own truck or trailer. And it has turned into now very, very sophisticated food that you may have to go to a fine dining restaurant even to have this type of food, but you have the ability to get this food now out of a truck. And that trend has moved from the West Coast to the East Coast to the South. Obviously, it's huge in Portland, Austin, Charleston, in some of these really, you know, first-rate culinary cities. And luckily, Tuscaloosa and Northport, the movement has begun here. I started Local Roots, April 1st was our first day in business, it's our first year. And I've been working on our concept for over a year, and the support has been overwhelming. You know, in almost two months, we have nearly 3,000 followers on social media. People wanna know where we are, we talk everywhere we can, from businesses to different public events. And it's really, really been great. And when we first heard about trucks on the tracks, we were excited, I thought it was fantastic. The one thing about, that I think we can all agree on is we want downtown Northport to grow. We wanna create more foot traffic, we wanna create more business, we wanna create more activities in downtown Northport. Streets on the Street is another awesome, that sounds great. And the way you do that is, is you create a destination location. You give something that people can come and have options, similar to shopping malls. Instead of just having a big box store in the middle of the parking lot, we have a mall that has multiple stores, different types of shops, different types of food. And you have, and you give people options. And that's what destination cities have done. When you look at the growth of Birmingham, it's revitalization. If you look, I just came back from Charleston, and there's just so many options. So our food truck business, we have these followers that are already. And when we hear we get to go to downtown Northport, we start pushing out social media left and right. And people are excited about it, and the turnout was fantastic. I think we had nearly 1,200 people come to downtown Northport on a Thursday. Majority of these people were followers of ours, followers of the other food trucks. And the reality is that those people probably would not have come to downtown Northport if it weren't for that event that day. And if we would've had the event elsewhere, they would've come there. People love events where they have multiple options, and they don't have to come eat at my truck. They can eat at truck X, Y, and Z that may have been there. And the summary of all this is, an event was put together with businesses from all around town. It was the first event, it was a huge success. And we hear complaints with battling with the city of Tuscaloosa also. But the only real complaint that I've hear are, there are too much traffic, too many people in downtown Northport. And I think those are good problems. We had multiple businesses from around downtown Northport offering. If you bring a receipt from the food truck, if you get a discount, that was kind of the growing thing. So how do you come get whatever from us, and you go to Mary's and get a dessert, or you go to wherever and shop? I think it was a great success, I think it should continue. I think we should continue to push it to turn into a larger event. It's once a month, you know, it's not something we're doing every day. And at the end of the day, once again, the biggest complaint was, there were too many people in downtown Northport, and in my opinion, that's a good problem.
Hey Dustin, I was just curious, you might can help me answer this question. But like in my simple mind, if I wanted to go to De Palmer's, or I wanna go to Billy's, or the City Cafe, I'm not necessarily wanting to go to a food truck that day. So to me, I don't see where the competition is.
Yeah, I think that's a real low question, we get a question a lot. On a Friday night, if you have a group of people and you have reservations to go to a sit-down dinner, you're probably not gonna stop at my truck and change your dinner plan. That was kinda more of our point, where people came to that event that wouldn't regularly be coming to downtown Northport. And that's kinda not on anything that's going on in downtown Northport. It's just kind of, people came to that event to see the five or six or eight different trucks. People do follow our truck, other trucks, all over town. So if someone's gonna be going to Billy's that day, and that's what they wanted to eat, that's probably where they're gonna go eat.
To stay.
Sure. People usually know where they wanna go eat that morning, around here at least. So I don't think we're taking business away by any means, whether we're in downtown Northport, or in Tuscaloosa, or in business. I think we're just providing more options for more people in the city. And it's no different than another restaurant coming to downtown Northport and setting up in between them. There's room for growth, I think we've proved that, and the people want options. And, you know, if it flops as we continue, then people, the public are saying they don't want the food trucks. But I think the public says that they really enjoy this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Last one, Rich Barfield, Rick Barfield. Thank you, Rich, thanks for coming. Please state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Rich Barfield, 5201 Northwood Lake Drive West, Northport, Alabama, 35473. I'm with Jojo's Food Truck. And obviously, with everybody that's come before me, we've covered a lot of it. I'd like to point out one thing I think Dustin forgot to mention was that his commissary kitchen and our commissary kitchen are both located in Northport, Alabama. So when we prepare the food before we put it on the truck, we both have a kitchen that we built out in Northport, Alabama, and we, well, I pay ground, he may have bought his, I don't know. But either way, there's a lot of taxes involved in that. And then when we sell food in Northport, we pay taxes to y'all, to the city of Northport. And that's important to note. And anybody we hire and all that, you know, we're paying taxes, we're. I do think a point that, I believe, Mrs. Brown, I don't.
I believe you know it.
Yes, ma'am.
That maybe we should all get together and have a committee. And with Whitney in charge, she's done a, did a fabulous job with that Trust by the Track, amazing job. And have her head it up, or however y'all do that, and just let everybody get together and talk. Maybe we shift it toward the night, and I can tell you for the next month or two, or three, maybe four, we probably should've shifted to the night, because it's so hot right now. And so that might make it a little more successful, a little, would take a little pressure off the City Cafe. And of course, Billy's would need to be involved in that and so forth, and see how they feel about it. We're not here to take people's business. We're here to add to, as Dustin said, you know, having that kinda foot traffic down there. And maybe a little, we were handing out coupons for Mary's for a discount on dessert. We're more than willing to do that and contribute to that. You know, I'm a huge fan of downtown Northport, used to work at the Globe. First hardware store I go to if we need something, or my wife needs some plants or whatever, we go to Andrews. You know, I mean, we're part of that community, we're part of this community. We're not trying to take anything from anybody or anything like that. And I feel fairly certain if you have 1,200 people in downtown Northport for that Trust by the Tracks, those, I mean, there wasn't a restaurant down there that could've served that many people. I mean, we had a line a mile a lot long, you know? And you can't tell me that people didn't blow up and go, well, heck, I'm going to the City Cafe, or I'm going to Billy's, you know? So, I mean, we wanna be a part of the community, we wanna contribute. I think we already have, to a small degree at least. And we just, we're not, we're not trying to make enemies, we're trying to make friends, and we're trying to contribute community. So anything y'all could do to help us in that area, we certainly would appreciate it. If you have any questions?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Before we move on, Mr. President, somebody just wants to speak.
Uh, no, that's it.
In our ordinance as far as food trucks.
I'm sorry, Miss Jen?
Can I just respond to a few things that they said? Is that allowed?
It's.
I can take my three, I can do three minutes fast.
I'll tell you what I'll do, can I, can I, can I give you three minutes here?
Do it, what now?
Come on up, come on up, come on up.
Number one, if you wanna be a part of Northport, build in Northport. You wanna contribute, contribute to Northport, don't come in and try to take from everyone else there. It's simple. If you wanna buy my business, hey, make an offer. If you wanna be beside me, build a restaurant right beside me. I'm more than happy to compete with my food against your food. It's not fair to businesses that are here to have to have other people come in on tax-funded property, city property that's paid for by our taxes, and have to run and get free rides. That's the whole issue, downtown Tuscaloosa is fighting the food trucks. We should at least align ourselves with the city of Tuscaloosa and ensure our restaurants are provided the same protections that they're doing for their restaurants. You know, if they want to be a part of Northport, invest in Northport. Build your restaurant just like we have. That's what it's there for, equal opportunity for all. You know, you have the same time I do. Build just like we have. Don't just come in, take what you can get, leave your trash behind and go. That's not what it's for. We expect more. And hopefully, we can look at this ordinance, I think the ordinance should be looked at, revised, worked on. It's not something, this did not work for us. I've mentioned several businesses that did not work for. I pay parking that they do not. That's another free service that they were providing. They don't pay for stores, I provided bathrooms for their customers because they walked up the street. They had to use a quarter potty, that was pre-dirt hot. Nobody takes a child in a quarter potty in 90-degree weather. You know, the city, we had to do landscaping, trash, you know, taking care of this. The police would have to direct traffic. Who's paying for all that? They are not. They're there for one day and gone, once a month. We have a plan for downtown Northport, let's not lose focus of that. They wanna have an event, move it elsewhere, you know, if not for downtown. Trucks by the Track, no, that's not the image for downtown. You know, we need to get the hotel, we need businesses put on the land. We don't need to have someone say, oh, I'm grandfathered in there, so I'm here to stay. No, we need to have actual businesses that go along with the plan that's already been provided for it, with the plan that was paid for by our tax money. The levy was built for this plan, not for food trucks, you know? And that's all I say on that.
Thank you, thank you, Jen.
I was gonna ask, now, as far as our existing ordinance. Ron, the ordinance says it has to be on private property. It has to be 500 feet from a light business, is that what it says?
Uh, yes, sir. Unless it's a sponsored event, yes.
Okay. Okay, I sort of lost, and I'm hearing a lot of different things. Who's sponsoring, because I didn't know anything about it, so I got the council meeting and said, I can't guarantee I'm real sure. Is the city of Northport sponsoring? Oh, somebody?
It was on city property, just if it was on Kintuck, so that would be a city-owned property. So it has to be, well, they say it's sponsored, you need to try your ordinance out. So Jen, you made some great points, and at the end of the meeting, I'll kinda have us a plan of action, maybe move it forward, so.
Just some other businesses in the area, see, did I add the other meeting, or? Just non-restaurant?
Well, let me, let me, let me do this, because we do have a sign-up sheet. And I've got three people that signed up for a sign-up sheet. Now, what I'll do is at the end of the meeting, I'll make sure that I may call and give you a couple minutes, if that's possible.
Appreciate it.
But let's get to the business of the city first, then we can kinda do our public comment action.
Let me, let me ask you a question, though. I know this past week, there was, I was in downtown Northport. And don't get me wrong, I'm all for free enterprise, entrepreneurship, I'm all for it. But we got an ordinance, you know, there was a food truck parked right across the street from Billy's Restaurant. And I thought it had to be 500 feet. And I pray for Billy's a lot, but I went out his back door a couple weeks ago, and there was a food truck to say 15 feet from his back door, on public property, on city right-of-way. What, if we got somebody that's gonna be enforcing this, if we passed an ordinance, is somebody gonna be enforcing this?
I don't think so, mayor. I think, I wanna say Jason McKinnon, because he's our code enforcement officer. And Stevens, you, you help me on that one. That would be Officer McKinnon out of RPD. So with issues like that come up, of course, I wouldn't say Humphries, I appreciate you guys coming up. But if that does happen again, we do have a mechanism in place to enforce it. So we will make sure that we enforce that through our code enforcement officer.
Okay, let's go and get that clear, sir.
Thank you. Anything else, mayor? Item seven, ladies and gentlemen, unfinished business, 781, is a second reading of an ordinance. Ordering a vacation of a right-of-way for a portion of 12th Street. This is John Powell Webb's office, again. John, we've actually had a first reading on it, had a public hearing, open and closed, and no opposition. Again, this is the 12th Street, right off of Main Avenue, where the T-shirt shop owned by Che Gueh C. Campus, is it Campus Life? Campus Collections, thank you. So again, I'll make an ordinance, oh, excuse me, I'm going to approve that resolution consenting a vacation of public right-of-way street or alley in the city of Northport for a portion of 12th Street, is our second.
Second.
Thank you, my councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Here you go, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor?
Yes.
Counselor Kerry.
That's another great business that's growing in the city of Northport. We appreciate them being here, appreciate their hard work and their expansion.
Second item is a resolution authorizing a Tuscaloosa County industrial development authority, or TCIDA, to act on behalf of the city of Northport. Again, Mr. Ron, this is basically, we're gonna mirror the state law in terms of negotiations for county-related industrial items, is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
This is basically same as Tuscaloosa and Tuscaloosa County respectively.
Yes, sir, identical, a resolution to the highest, uh, those two, he's already.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution authorizing a Tuscaloosa County or TCIDA to act on behalf of the city of Northport, is our second.
Second.
Second, my councilman Sims. Any questions or comments? Here you go, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sam?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Kerry.
Item 8B1, under new business, is a resolution declaring certain items a surplus and authorizing their disposal. This is out of T.D., Chief Burton, these are old uniforms that our police department has pretty much deemed surplus and gun sights, and actually some weapons that we do have. But I will assure the public that these guns be disposed of in accordance to state and federal law. They will not be sold to any regular citizen, is that right, Chief?
That's correct.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution declaring certain items a surplus and authorizing their property disposal, is our second.
Second.
Second, my councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Here you go, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Sam? Counselor Kerry.
Item 2 is a resolution ordering bid file 16-04, inflatable boat, Chief Marshall, again. Lowest responsible bidder is Mill Pro, the bidder met the specifications that are attached on the bid tab. And we're gonna authorize the City Administrator's Office to approve the requisition. Again, this is the inflatable boat because we have to meet the requirements of our agreement with Tuscaloosa County EMS and water rescue. Is that right?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution authorizing the bid for an inflatable rescue boat, bid file 16-04 to Mill Pro, and the bidder, the bidder meeting specifications that are attached, and authorize the Mr. Swan's office to approve the requisition, is our second.
Second.
Second, my councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Here you go, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Sam?
Yes.
Item 3, going along with that second item, is a resolution ordering bid file 16-05, boat motor, Chief Marshall, again, the required boat motor for this inflatable boat is a 30-horsepower two-stroke Rescue Pro pump jet outboard, and that's bid file 16-05. Lowest responsible bidder is Mill Pro, again, I'll make that motion to approve, is our second.
Second.
Second, my councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Here you go, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Sam?
Yes.
Counselor Kerry.
Thank you. Item 4 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement with Tuscaloosa County. Mr. Davis?
Yes, Mr. President, this basically formalizes an agreement we've had with Tuscaloosa County for a number of years, providing for the tag office and license office here at Northport, uh, City Hall.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution authorizing our mayor's office to enter to an agreement with Tuscaloosa County to provide a space for the county court annexing the Northport. This is basically just to ratify what's been going on for the last two months here, is that right, Ron?
Yes, sir.
Is that our second?
Second.
Second, my councilman Sims. Any questions or comments? Here you go, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sam?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Kerry.
Thank you. Item 5 is a resolution authorizing the City Administrator to proceed with repairs for the Henson Center. Ms. Starne, this is already going out to bid. We're gonna replace the existing roof, downspouts, fascia, and windows. Uh, we're going to replace the existing roof, downspouts, fascia and, uh, windows. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I think the, uh, bid amount was fifteen thousand, thirty-one dollars and zero cents. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, my Councilman Sims. Any questions or comments? Here, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sales.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing the settlement of a lawsuit with Alabama Furniture LLC. Mr. Davis.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. This involves a lawsuit involving seventeen different municipalities to say that as to what, where taxes should be paid to say that Northport was a minor player or an understatement. Uh, basically, we will pay, uh, two hundred and thirty dollars and we're overpaid by the amount of a hundred and sixty dollars. So this authorizes us in returning a hundred and sixty dollars to two hundred and thirty dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution authorizing a big settlement of a lawsuit with Alabama Furniture LLC. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, my Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Here, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sales.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item twenty, is a resolution authorizing our city administrator's office to execute the EPA ESA. Mr. Ingram, this is basically, uh, I'll call it the EPA Clean Air Act. It's a, it's a federal mandate that we have to get settled up with the EPA. It's no issues here. It's just part of a risk management plan that we need to include some, some data from our census of two thousand and ten, some training and safety for our Floridaers that we've upgraded in the model of the year and we're going to basically make some notes on ourselves, practices and how we protocol those. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution authorizing Mr. Swan's office to execute the necessary documents related to the EPA. expedite a settlement agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, my Councilman Sims. Any questions or comments? Here, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sales.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item C is our consent agenda. We have twenty items. I know in our previous, uh, Mr. Swan wanted to make sure that the public was aware, some of our expenditure, seven, excuse me, seven, uh, C sevens, C nine and C ten, of course, these are all budgeted and they are accounted for. Again, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as pre-.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Most of my Councilmen Sims, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, my Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Here, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sales.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Reports of special committees to council, we have none to report, although I, I do want to say that in the future, ladies and gentlemen, council is strongly looking at, uh, reactivating our committees to council so when we can kind of get a better hold on, uh, some of the issues such as projects, public safety, personnel and advocacy. So you'll see, uh, council be a part of some, some committees where we can keep staff involved and, and vice versa, all the way back up to our citizens. So you'll see some council reports back to the body and of course, the audience in the next few weeks. Uh, item ten is public hearings. We have none on the, on the agenda. Item eleven, city administrator's business. Mr. Swan.
Councilor, have you?
Item twelve, departmental business. Under PD, we have one item. It's for an ABC license request for Cajun Cray, Crayfish Crawfish LLC doing business as Cajun Crayfish Crawfish. Uh, Chief Burton, these are no concerns in the area of the ABC license request. Is that correct?
Definitely correct.
I move to approve the ABC license for Cajun Crayfish Crawfish LLC doing business as Cajun Crayfish Crawfish. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, my Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Here, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sales.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you and good luck to that business owner. Item thirteen, departmental business, of course, we have three citizens, but again, like I said earlier, I'll let a couple of citizens speak after we get through with our three citizens who have signed to speak forward. Uh, Mr. Steven Schwab. Mr. Schwab, thank you for coming. Please state your name and address, sir.
Steven Schwab. I live at twenty-five, twenty-fifth Street in Northport. Uh, there are two proposals to which I wish the city council would give serious and sustained consideration. The first one is dealing with the levy. Uh, at the last meeting, uh, city attorney Ron Davis said the levy is beginning to crack along the Far East End because of an engineering failure with the Army Corps of Engineers building, but he said there is no immediate danger. This attracted my attention. I went back into the records of the, um, Tuscaloosa news and I found that in two thousand and thirteen on March thirtieth, uh, Lydia Seville Avant, uh, wrote an article entitled "Part of Northport Levy Cracked Needs Repairs." And, uh, um, it was, at that time, the Northport City Council voted to spend fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, seven hundred and fifty dollars on preliminary engineering work. And, uh, also at that time, the city administrator, Scott Collins, said that the growing crack was not caused by weather or use, but by a flaw in the initial construction by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. A year later, uh, Mrs. Avant wrote a, uh, another article that was published on December sixteenth in which, uh, she noted that a portion of the levy, uh, showed first, first showed signs of cracking in two thousand and ten, uh, so six, uh, six years ago, uh, due to a flaw in the construction by the Corps. And, um, if you reach further in the article, it says that because the levy is cracked, the city is ineligible for disaster relief in the event of a flood, according to the Corps. Uh, the faulty section of the levy also puts millions of dollars' worth of homes and businesses in downtown Northport at risk. Now, uh, of course, we're in a dry season here in the summer, but in the winter, we have a lot of sustained downpour. And, um, you know, a problem doesn't become a disaster until it's upon you, like the historic Georgetown, uh, John, Johnstown flood, uh, of the late nineteenth century. Um, so, uh, I think we need to address this. If we have a, a disaster, of course, I understand it would affect largely the area behind the Matthews Elementary School and downtown, uh, Northport, um, but, uh, we wouldn't need to worry about attracting more businesses to Northport. We would be getting national headlines as a disaster. So I think that's an important issue that needs your sustained attention. The other issue, um, that I briefly would like to mention is, uh, I would like for you to give some consideration to, uh, turning, working with, uh, the city of Tuscaloosa, uh, to make the Tuscaloosa Regional Airport used by commercial airlines. This has been a subject we did for a while, have, uh, commercial flights, uh, in and out of the Tuscaloosa Regional Airport, uh, but they ended, uh, I think about two thousand and, I forget, seven or nine. But of course, when President Obama visited here, he came into the Tuscaloosa Airport on, what was it, AC, uh?
Seven, seven fifty-seven, I think.